Good evening, one and all. Thank you all for coming and spending your evening with us. Hopefully you can get out of here maybe before the sun goes down. I don't know.
Motion for adjournment?
Let me call the city council meeting to order at seven o'clock Tuesday, April 23rd. I'm going to ask everybody, please stand for an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh, Heavenly Father. As we gather this evening, we remember the tragic events in Boston and West Texas. We pray for those lost, and we ask for your hand in caring for those injured. We ask that you keep in your heart all the men and women who keep us safe, those serving the city, those serving the state, and those serving throughout this country. We cherish them all. For it is in your name we pray. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, please call her own.
Councilmember Burghardt.
Here.
Councilmember Battelli.
Councilmember McCann.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
You.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
Attorney Howison.
Here.
Thank you, one and all. Moving on, reading of journals. Previous meetings, we have in your packet the regular meeting minutes from March 26th. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any amendments, corrections, deletions? Unheard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're up to citizens' comments. I have a couple here who would like to speak. I'm going to ask Ann Bauer and Catherine Malloy. I'm not sure if this is a tag team or one other time.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
I'm Ann Bauer. This is Catherine Malloy. We're here representing the Island Turtle Team. We briefed public safety a few months ago, and we just wanted to do a follow-up with you to let you know about an event that we had on the island that we think is a very positive thing for the island last Saturday in between bad storms. We hosted what we called Lagerhead Lessons, educational event for children 10 and under. It was a free event. We set up six stations on Front Beach, and it culminated with a puppet show, but we really were focused on teaching all those who attended about our sea turtles and about the turtle team's efforts to conserve them. We had 70 children and about 50 adults. We hear the adults learned as much or more than the kids. It was really a great, positive event, we think, for the island, and we hope this will be the first of an annual event, so we just wanted to make you aware of that.
Very good.
Congratulations.
I'm assuming you kept a list of the children?
Oh, yes. We do.
Yes, we do. Listen, we also had youth volunteers that were teenagers, and that was really wonderful. They really helped with that. So we have them on the list too for next year.
All right. Have a good season.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on my list, Dennis Sammerson.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I live on the island, live on Durford Lane, and I have a business here on the island, Carolina Coastal Harbor. So I'm here with respect to the sign ordinance and the issue that was raised with my little green car this last week, and I just really wanted to take this opportunity to bring out two things that I hope comes out. I know it's an agenda item on tonight's schedule, and two things that I hope would come out of the discussion. First, I'd like to see the wording of the ordinance to be more specific as it relates to vehicle signage and what's prohibited and what's allowed. I said, "I don't think that there should be a debate regarding whether my car's primary purpose is for transportation or whether it's for advertising." In my opinion, the ordinance is written far too subjective, and I don't think it really should be to the whims of government to decide, "Is that a billboard or is that a car?" So as I understand, the intent of the ordinance is to prevent somebody from buying a car or buying a trailer and planting it somewhere with signage on it for the benefit of advertising. In other words, it would be a sign. And that clearly was never my intent with my little car, nor is it now. That car was primarily purchased because it got 40 miles per gallon, and it's used by my housekeeping staff prior to rental check-ins as they travel the island to check and make sure that they're ready to go. If I had bought it for the primary purpose of advertising, I certainly would have adorned it with a little larger logo than what I've got on there. I probably wouldn't have waited six months to put the logo on the back window, and there wouldn't be the mileage that's on the car that it is now because it's driven for business. So I've looked at similar ordinances from other municipalities. They get fairly specific, and I think it might be in our interest to get specific as well. So I would hate to think that another business person would have to visit -- not that I don't like seen Douglas. He's a great guy. But to be visited like he did last Tuesday to tell me that my -- when he said, "You're in violation of the sign ordinance," I thought it had something to do with a move from our old building to the new building, and he said, "No, no, it's your little green car out there that's in violation." So hopefully that's what'll come out of this thing. The second point is, is I really would like to have the city acknowledge that as a citizen and as a business person, I really have the right to park my car wherever I want to. So I am a tenant of that island center. I was told that what I needed to do is to move my car away from where it's parked because my logo is prominent to Palm Boulevard. I would argue that that's the reason why any logo is on a vehicle, is for the advertising. So that's not the primary purpose, but that's a secondary purpose, and it's my hope that people notice that logo, whether it's tooling down the street or whether it's parked someplace, because through that, it might bring me a little bit of business, and it might bring me a little more accommodation of tax money. So we both benefit in that. But to be able to -- for someone to tell me that, "Dennis, you either need to move it out of sight or turn the car around so nobody can see your logo," I thought was just ridiculous. Now, it'd be a different story. If somebody went out and bought a trailer or bought a junker or any vehicle, and they adorned it with logos and planted it somewhere, then I think the city could treat that as a sign. So that certainly is not the case with my vehicle there. So, you know, I've been bothered ever since Tuesday, when Douglas came by, as to why we were singled out. So I look around the island. There are many, many examples of other vehicles that have logos on them. I would say perhaps mine might be the example of the smallest vehicle with a logo on it, and maybe the smallest logo even. I'm not sure. But there are many, many, many others that are out there, and I don't have the privilege to know whether they were approached. I would advocate for them to say, "If they're being used in their business, please don't approach them," because I think they've got the right to have them there. But why I was the guy that was picked out, I don't know. So perhaps Mr. Loftus doesn't like my car. He doesn't like my logo. He doesn't like me. He doesn't like vacation rental companies. I don't know why, but it's bothered me ever since that happened last week. So I didn't really ask for this to be an issue. I don't really think it should be an issue. I'd like to think I'm a pretty nice guy, but there are times when you're pushed, you've really got to stand up for what's right, and I think this is a case where I need to stand up and say, "It's just not right to tell me where to park my car or how to park my car." So I would hope in the future that somebody else wouldn't have to go through what I went through in this situation. I would have pushed back a little harder, but $1,000 a day scared me, and so to be threatened with a $1,000 a day fine, I thought was a little bit excessive as well. As I said to you in my email last Tuesday night when this all came up, really all I wanted was somebody to come to me and say, "Hey, Dennis, we might have overreacted a little bit. Make sure your car doesn't get parked there and planted in that place. As long as you're using it for business, you're okay." I would have gone away. I wouldn't be standing here today. We wouldn't be discussing this issue. I wouldn't have these people showing up on my doorstep wanting to talk to me about this issue. I appreciate the advertising I'm getting from that, so thank you for that. But it's my hope that this ordinance can be readdressed, and there won't be other businesses faced with the same issues that I was faced with this last week. I really have more important and better things to do. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, I don't have anybody else on my list. Anybody else wish to address council this time? Oh, please, come on forward.
I'm Susan Haney. I live at 1426th Avenue. I'm a year-round resident. What I'm passing to you is just a very simple price comparison of grocery items. We need a market here on the island for the summer. I did a little price comparison. I honestly think paying $7 for a gallon of milk is excessive. The BP station has groceries, but it's such a low inventory that it couldn't possibly handle all of the tourists that we have coming in. The Marina, as you can see, the prices, I think, are a little bit much for most of the items, and we need to approach, as a city, I believe, Beach Company and Piggly Wiggly to open up a temporary market, a small, just basic needs market. We don't need eight kinds of toilet paper on the aisle. We just need to be able to buy a gallon of milk or a dozen eggs or, you know, to pick up a package of bacon or something at a reasonable price. I just don't believe that what we have, the Marina and the BP station, can possibly handle the grocery needs of the residents and the visitors that will be coming to us this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I address that, anyone else wish to comment on anything? Let me just comment on your last point because we discussed it this time last month. Councilman Ward brought that same point up, the need to find some way to find basic needs now that the red and white has closed. We did approach the Beach Company, and the Beach Company took our request seriously. They have now come back and unfortunately informed us that, given their construction schedule and the layout of the properties and how they're going to have to work that construction, there is no room on the site to -- even if it was possible for Newton Farms slash the Pig to put something temporarily over here, there is no room on the existing site that isn't going to be part of the construction initiative because they're going to have to raise the parking lot as we know it is going to have to be raised, let alone the building's going to have to be torn down, et cetera. So at this point, they've said, "No, we've gone back with a couple of other options." And have you had to hear back from them again unless we heard something later today?
No, sir, but we are continuing to push. I think everybody's in agreement that as the season, you know, kicks up more and more, it's going to become more and more difficult to get off the island, and the interim, the Marina store is probably the best option. But we are continuing to have email dialogue back and forth with Leonard Way. He's not totally close-minded. He is concerned about the construction. I had some dialogue with the people at the Jekyll Island Authority, which is a neighboring island in Georgia, because they had a similar situation some years back, and so they are sending me some photographs because I happened to see some temporary facilities there when I was there visiting. So I'm hoping I can use those photographs to go back to Mr. Way and say, "See, you know, maybe we can tuck one of these in here and do this." It would be a great opportunity. Newton Farms, I think, could be a real hero in this situation by coming in early and kind of saving us all from having to be in the beach traffic just to run to the store to get a few items for, you know, whatever we're preparing or to gear up for a load of unexpected guests that might come in. So we're going to keep trying. We'll keep it at the top of our list and try to persuade them if they can move things around. The other complication that they were worried about is SE and G is laying that undermarsh line, and the very area where there might have a corner is where that undermarsh line will actually bump up. And so I sent a communication just today to SE and G to say, "When do you think you'll be out of there? If it's imminent, then maybe we still have a little more time." So we're going to keep trying, and I, you know, I think we all would be happy. Councilmember Ward.
Point is, we're not giving up on this at all, and appreciate everybody pushing hard on it.
The, as you know, the -- I call it the oak building. Sorry, Dennis. That building is complete and occupied. At least two of the four bays is occupied. So the primary building that's going to be demolished is now vacant, and they have taken out a permit to start the demolition, not actual demolition. They have to remove the asbestos first. So that process is underway. They're working as hard as they can, but obviously it's not going to be done by this summer. So it's going to then take the demolition action, and then they're going to have to bring the site remediation up to speed, so a lot is going on there. And to answer another question that's burning in the community, I don't think we know, at least I don't know, and I don't think anybody here knows, what's going in the drive-thru building that's being renovated. I suppose if there are 10 of us up here, we'd probably have nine different opinions as to what's possibly going in there through rumors, but it's still open for lease. Anybody knows, anybody wants to go in there, please have at it, but they're renovating it to bring it up to reasonable standards. At least that's the best we've heard, and then hopefully they'll find an appropriate tenant to make us feel good. So I don't think it's large enough for a temporary grocery bill, which was one of our thoughts at some point. So any other citizen comment before we move on? All right, let me move on to Ways and Means Committee report, which is an 18-page report, so please stay tuned. We met at 5:45 on the 16th. Our treasurer went through the current state of financial affairs. We're three quarters of the way through the year, and our general fund revenues is running at 72% of our budget, and our general fund expenditures is running at 69% of the budget, which is all good news. When we received this month another payment from the county from the property taxes, we can report that we are now at 99% of our budget on property tax revenue. So we're virtually locked on to our revenue from property taxes, and if you might recall, this time last year, we were really behind the eight ball and didn't know if the county would catch up, which they did at the last moment, but now they seem to be more on their typical schedule, and so we're feeling better. So our finances are in excellent shape. We had a progress report from our treasurer on credit card processing, and we're going to be using SCGOV to work under -- which has a state contract, to work on internet acceptance of credit cards. This will be revenue neutral to the city. Anybody who wishes to use a credit card will be charged a 1.7% transaction fee plus $1 per transaction. That'll keep us all neutral at the end of the day when that transpires. So that's something that people have been looking forward to, and hopefully it works well once we have it implemented. We looked at our tourism funds. Last month, while it was a low period on tourism, we're still ahead of our prior year, and year-to-date, we're running at 9% ahead of prior year, which is good news since we're three quarters of the way through the year. And our hospitality tax, again, was down prior years, but in prior years, we had some providers catching up. Year-to-date, we're still 10% ahead of prior year on hospitality tax. We had a longstanding discussion on the deployment and understanding of what a quick-response vehicle would be for medical calls. This is a vehicle, an SUV or a truck, that's equipped purely to respond to medical calls. Our fire team went through a great deal of detail, showing us, A, how they respond now, and B, how they would respond with a quick-response vehicle in the fleet. The bottom line was that we would have to add six new fire personnel, plus acquire a vehicle for about $50,000 and equip the vehicle and the personnel, and by the time that's all said and done, it'd be over $300,000. The savings, while not insignificant, do not measure up to a cost of $300,000 to initiate and a $250,000 ongoing cost thereafter. But it is something we will continue to monitor because if we can extend the life of our large-capable fire equipment, it's always a good thing. And so if it ever turns to the good, you know, maybe that's somewhere down the road in the future. Other communities like North Charleston, Mount Pleasant, and others have such vehicles, but they have a staff commensurate with it, and they can augment their personnel much easier than we can in our normal response capabilities. The fire team also, I think, was quite educational for most, went through how they deploy and what the personnel assignments are, when they deploy, given the number of personnel we have per station based on house fires. I think that was quite educational for everybody to understand. Then we moved on and considered a sole-source contract for equipment, sole-source to be consistent with our prior, not to exceed $10,500, to be placed with Charleston Powersports for budgeted purchase of wave runners. So I'll make that in the form of a motion that we award Charleston Powersports a contract not to exceed $10,500 for wave runners.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Unheard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. We moved on to award of a contract to Berkeley Heating and Air Conditioning an amount of $39,000. I'm a little confused. I'm not sure whether it's 303 or...
It's 303.
303. So the, okay. So I'm going to make a motion to award Berkeley Heating and Air Conditioning $39,303 for the budgeted purchase of the HVAC for the Rec Center. This has been bid, and they are the low bidder. So make a motion seconded. Any discussion on the Rec AC? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We then considered a change in the business licenses. We had a long discussion. We'll deal with that momentarily when we get to reading of ordinances, but the long and short of it was, we approved a change in the business license due date from January 31st to April 30th. Am I saying it right?
That's correct, yes.
And while it will cost the city some funds, $5,000 in a one-time expense, it was judged to be prudent to help our businesses on the island, the businesses who come and work on the island, to change the date to a more seasonally adjusted period. So we'll deal with that when we get to the ordinance readings. We did move -- we have some funds left from fabrication of signs. I won't bore you with all that detail, but we did move the funds that were not committed to use those funds to produce no parking on pavement signs, as many as we can afford with that limited funds, to be consistent with the other signs that we procured last month, and those signs would be placed on roads 42nd through 57th as far back as we can go, depending on how many signs we can get for that amount of money. So that should be moving forward. We then, as part of our session, we moved into a budget workshop where we went through the FY14 operating and capital budgets in fair amount of detail. That's where most of the 18 pages gets consumed. Let me just reiterate that in conclusion of the workshop, we have a balanced budget in our general fund. We have no property tax increase anticipated. Our revenue sources are projected for the next 12 months to be based principally on the last 12 months of history, so we're taking no abnormal risk in projection of our revenue stream. Our expenses are fairly well in line. We do -- will sustain an increase in state health plan. That'll be a little bit greater than 13% for state health insurance for employees. We will have a 3% merit pool in place for our employees whose performance warrants an increase. We will absorb the remaining 12-month cost for the Charleston radio users' transfer, consolidated dispatch transaction, as well as the Charleston County radio users' fee. Those expenses are all built into our budgeting. We also, in the capital programs, we've determined over the series of months, trying to avoid any capital equipment debt, we're creating a capital -- in our capital projects and tourism funds, we're budgeting for future major capital equipment based on the remaining life of any of the existing capital equipment that we have. Could be 10 years, can be 15 years. We put together an exhaustive spreadsheet. I don't know how many colors we wound up using, but it lays out what capital needs we would have each year for the periods necessary for that equipment such that we would not have to be in debt at the time any of the equipment needed to be replaced in the future. That's principally public works, trucks, fire equipment, and now we're into the radio replacements three, four years down in the future. So we have put aside in our capital plans this year $678,000 for that equipment for future funds to be needed. So that's good news that we have those funds, and we can put it aside, and we can avoid any future debt. So we'll be dealing with that, and please that we, again, have a balanced budget and no tax increase for property taxes. And now there's something else. Let me go through these pages. Anybody who wishes to go through the results of the budget workshop and the current budget? We have some back on the far table. I'm assuming they're still there. Some of them might have walked off, and there's about five pounds. But other than that, we adjourned and set a next date of May 21st to 2013, 13, for our next meeting. Any questions on Ways and Means?
Can you repeat that?
Marie can play it back. That's about as close as we can get for that. All right, let me move on to public safety. Why is he not here so far?
Yeah, I'm pitch-hitting for Chairman Battelli. Again, a rather long report because of the budget. Our first discussion was the enforcement of the roll-out cart ordinance, and after several things were introduced by Congressman Buchanan, it was considered we should take a look at the entire councilman? Congressman? Oh, sorry about that. Is that called a Freudian flip? I wasn't in touch. That we should really look more carefully at the ordinance. So it was the consensus from the committee. Chair Battelli stated the council should delay a second reading on the ordinance until the city learns more about other local governments, how they're handling keeping the garbage recycling containers out of the right-of-way and to enforce the regulation fairly. The committee should also consider a point in the future when the corrals possibly should be removed from the right-of-way. They're a bit arcane. They have passed their useful life, I think, and we need to continue that discussion in May. Again, the mayor's already mentioned the parking signs that we're going to order with the remainder of our $20,000 bid, $5,000 of which we have left for the 50s, for the streets in the 50s. With the committee's approval, the administrator was proposing the same sign fabricator. I'm repeating what the mayor said here. So we're after the new signs for the off -- all tires off the pavement parking. That's that. Again, he's stolen my thunder on the quick-response vehicles. A really fascinating presentation. I think it's in our future. I don't see how we can avoid it, but for now, it's a little cost prohibitive. We discussed the dog hours on the beach allowed off-leash in the high season, and that will be the first reading. Right now, the dogs can be off-leash from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and we're proposing to make it 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. So just give the locals an hour break in the summertime. The wave runner, again, the mayor's already covered it, so we're good with that. On our budgeting, the police department operating budget, Administrator Tucker noted that the police department FY14 operating budget, as presented, shows a 10% increase over FY13, but if the expenses related to our transition to consolidated dispatch were removed, the police department would actually have a decrease in their budget. So we have signed on to this consolidated dispatch, and now we have to pay for it. Man, it's so much budget stuff. Highlights from the departmental reports. The fire department chief reported that personnel responded to a call on March 31st about a black lab that was in distress in Breach Inlet. The dog had gotten into the inlet and would have drowned if they hadn't been rescued by our fire department. Always good to hear as a Labrador owner. During the month of March, personnel responded to 63 calls, 30 of which were EMS. Several public relations calls. Personnel helped a resident getting back into bed, helped assisted handicap visitors to and from the beach on multiple occasions, and assisted a resident on 56th Avenue to remove their car from the garage. I'm sort of thinking that might have been because of water, flooding. Okay. Police departments report. because of water, flooding, okay. Police Department's report. Sort of an interesting incident. The chief recounted an incident on March 25th that involved a golf cart being operated by two minors who had alcoholic beverages in the car, as well as a stolen golf cart flag from Wild Dunes. Golf flag, course flag.
That's me, yeah.
Yeah, right. They had neon lights. Under the heading of Community Service and Crime Prevention, Chief Buchanan reported that the police personnel are working with the rental agencies on the island, tagging electronic equipment inside rental properties, and then entering that information into a database operated by the Police Department. The program has been well-received by the agency, and I've been told that any citizen can take part in it. If you have, this would be a list of numbers off your flat-screen TV if, heaven forbid, your house is broken into, at least then, they have a number to go by, that they can possibly retrieve the, the merchandise. There was a meet and greet on March 21st, and there will be another one that I thought I wrote down.
It's Thursday.
This Thursday night at Forest Trail and 34th.
34th.
At?
5:30.
5:30.
5 o'clock.
5:00.
5:00.
So, get out there and talk to the police. During the month of March, dispatchers responded to 3,660 calls, of which 3,114 were for the Police Department. Officers made 364 traffic stops that generated 76 citations. 128 incident reports were written in March. The island has experienced 14 burglaries year-to-date. The burglaries are happening mainly in rental homes, and flat-screen TVs are being, TVs are being taken. The majority of the 24 arrests in the month were traffic offenses, either DUIs or driving under suspended license. Again, back to getting the numbers off your, your sets and things of value in your home. It could be a real help to the police and to you to retrieve a stolen item. In the livability area, there were nine noise complaints lodged in the month and generating one citation and four warnings. Of course, our rental season's just starting, so unfortunately there'll probably be an uptick in that. Oh, here's the meet and greet. 5 to 6 on Thursday, April 25th, the corner of Forest Trail and 34th, for residents of Forest Trail, Forest Trail Courts 1 and 2 and Cross Lane. Next meeting is May 13th, 5:00 p.m. at the City Hall Conference Room.
Okay. Any questions for safety?
Motion.
Excuse me?
And it's, it's, it's on here. It's in the, it's the first reading.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know where you were, but you're, you're satisfied?
Yeah. About the dog.
Oh, that's, yeah.
I'm bad.
Let's go to Public Works.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met 5:30 Wednesday, April 3rd. All committee members were present. Department head gave the report and collection and track reports. He had, again, 12 and a half hours of overtime for pumping on March 24th, another 12 hours on March 16th for our recycling event that we had. For a second month, pumping was our focus, and again, this past week, we're out there pumping again. So, we're, we're working on it. Also, cleaning the beach.
Why don't we stop the rain for a while?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's good. All right. You heard me here.
Cleaning of the beach access pass is continuing and will continue as weather allows. Vehicle maintenance is still in line with our budget. It's interesting, again, our garbage is down. Our volume of garbage leaving the island is down. We contribute that to the recycling and the single-stream recycling that we have. But again, our yard debris is, our yard debris is up, and I'm sure after the winds that we've had this past weekend, I'm sure it'll be up a lot more. Under old business, we talked of our, of Public Works budget. It's long, and we'll continue to talk about it. Under new business, we just discussed some of the flooding that we had on Sparrow Lane. A lot of that was contributed to the fact that we had some flooding, but it was a, the timing was wrong. Let's say, we had extremely high tide and a lot of rain, so water was not even allowed to leave the island. So, the drainage ditches that we have were not allowed to function because they had nowhere to go. So, it was just, it was just timing on that one. We had a report and a request for bids for citywide landscaping. Right now, we've received all our bids for citywide landscaping. The administration was supposed to go on a field trip and look at all the different projects that they've had on some of the lower bidders, and we'll be discussing that in our next meeting. We had some discussion to expand some of the yellow trash barrels along the island, along Palm Boulevard throughout, perhaps on both sides of the streets. During discussion, the director indicated that if there were, if we were having overflow in certain areas, that the contractor would go through and increase the number of cans in that area as well. We don't know what the cost would be, so we're gonna continue to look at that, but we haven't, we had not made any action on it. We had discussion of some of the racks, discussion of random acts of kindness, two of which I performed this weekend at the yard sale, when I pulled out two cars out of the ditch. So, it was just a...
Very manly of you.
It was just too wet.
Was that on your own or with a truck?
With a truck.
Oh.
But it was, it was just extremely wet and everything. People were just sliding in the mud. We had some discussion with that, and then, that's basically the end of our meeting. Well, a lot of this will carry on to our next meeting, and which we schedule for May 6th in the City Hall Conference Room.
Okay. I'm assuming you are working through staff on the lot, our green space?
Yes, we have.
Our next budget, our next budget, our next meeting, so, okay.
It's scheduled for a discussion.
Correct. Any other questions for Public Works? I'm assuming Sparrow, if I understand it right, we have a flapper valve.
Right.
And so, when the tide is high?
It shuts.
The tide, the pressure from the tides holds it shut.
Right.
And so, you can't rain.
Correct.
So, that's what the problem was.
Would you check the flapper valve on Tabby Lane?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
I was gonna make a comment about the flapper valve.
Beat you to it.
All right, enough of that. Let's move on to recreation, please.
The REC Committee met on April 1st, 4:00 p.m. All members present. Again, always a busy season at the REC. We have, most of our winter season sports are coming to an end. We had a first pitch half- rubber tournament, March 23rd, drew 13 teams, and in spite of the weather, it was completed on Saturday. The 50th Annual Half-Rubber Tournament, which is a big thing, will be held August 17th. Information is available now on the city's web, website. Tots Lacrosse is a new thing for the REC Center, and it has a great response and growing popularity. Spike Nights is still going on. We have, of course, the ping-pong league with Councilman Carroll as an ace going on right now. Coming up, we have the Isle of Palm Beach Run, which is scheduled for Saturday, June 29th. Again, this year, it will be both a 5K and 10K run, starting behind the Windjammer. Many programs and classes are beginning to wind down, making room for the summer camps, but the yoga and exercise classes will continue through the summer months. 50 teenagers attended the March meeting, and in addition, 15 teenagers made a lunch-munch trip to, is this a tongue twister?
Of course.
A lunch-munch trip to Brico Braco. The popularity of the middle school dance is never in question. 354 youths attended, danced, and enjoyed the jump cancel. The Easter egg hunt, of course, always a huge event, if you missed it. Approximately 850 to 900 children collected eggs, got bags of candy for their efforts. The annual yard sale was just this past weekend, and as we noted, it was underwater a bit, so the REC Center is rerunning it this coming Saturday, same hours. It'll be advertised in the Post and Courier, and of course, signs will be up. So, anyone who didn't make it last weekend, you can make it this weekend, and some of the vendors who didn't make it, then we'll be able to get there.
What's the weather forecast?
Don't ask, huh?
Supposed to be sunny.
Sunny, huh?
All right, good.
I'm calling for sunshine.
Quite about time. This year, we'll have the 25th Annual Piccolo Spoleto Sand Sculpting Contest, and we will have a full-page ad in the Piccolo Spoleto program book. All but two weeks of the summer camp summertime sunshine, summer sunshine. I can really talk. Normal, normal light. Camp summer shine are full. Couple spaces open for the week of the 4th of July. Again, we went through the budget, and you've heard about the HVAC, which we've already voted on. So, our next meeting will be May 1st, 4:00 p.m. in the conference room.
Any questions for REC? Thank you. Personnel Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The regular meeting of the Personnel Committee was held Wednesday, April 3rd. In attendance were Councilman Battelli, Stone, Thomas, Administrator Tucker, Assistant Zubin, and the City Clerk Copeland. The meeting was called to order, and the press and public were being duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The amendments of previous meeting were approved. There were no citizens' comments. The FY14 budget for General Government and Building Department were reviewed. Administrator Tucker stated the work is continuing on the Kalia budget that was requested at previous meeting, and the budget would be available at the Ways and Means Committee meeting. Based on an inquiry by a council member, the staff has investigated iPads for council in an effort to go paperless. BC3 has given the city a proposal for leasing iPads that includes all training and technical support for three years for 10 pads. The cost would be $16,800 a year. That did not respond to the request of, they did not respond to a request for a one-year agreement in case the one-year trial was not successful. In addition, if the trial was not successful, the city would incur a cost of two more years' lease, plus the cost of continuing the paper system. Leasing would have advantages of replacing faulty equipment or repair at no additional cost. Councilman Stone stated that he was not in favor of spending $16,000 more on this, this year, when the budget was already stretched. The administrator stated that the past trials did not work. It proved useful to a minority of council and still required paper for remaining members for duplication of efforts. It would be impossible to determine the savings until the system was used 100% and paper was eliminated. At that point, no conclusion was reached. General Government will be needed, need to have $5,000 added to the budget for the cost of issuing new hurricane reentry stickers. Building and planning include reductions in worker compensation, as well as usage and increases in printing supplies, computer changes, and additional mailing costs associated with changing the business license due dates. This budget increases by 5%. Judicial and legal, the increases are due to increased use of the prosecutor. There were no significant changes or discussions of the capital budget, general government capital purchases, or special projects. The Building Department has no capital purchases, and budgets are presented, presented do not contemplate a tax increase. Administrator reiterated that FY14 presents a different picture of fund balances because it is a first year that the city begins to save money for future asset purchases. She also reminded the committee of members that the money is not gone, but is being held for future purchase. Our next meeting will be 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, May 7th, 2013, in the conference room. And the safety winners of the sweepstakes at General Government is Debbie Suggs, Police Department Hunter Lathamore.
Laramore.
Laramore. Public Works Bernard.
Gordine.
Gordine, and Fire Department Dana Brunet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The only comment I want to make is, while there's a lot of work done, looking at iPads for council, it did not make the cut when we did the budget, so.
Well, we're not, we're not going with... I think we decided to forget it for a while.
Right. Too expensive. All right. Any other questions for Personnel? Let's move on to Real Property, please.
Real Property met April 2nd at 5:30 here at the City Council Building. Present was Assistant to Administrator Zubin, City Clerk Copeland, and City Administrator Tucker. Approval of the minutes passed unanimously. There were no citizens' comments. Comments from Marina tenants were nil. Old Business was next on the agenda, and we were reviewing of actions relative to the use of an immodical pole parking lot by Isle of Palms Water and Sewer to house temporary structures for replacement of antennae, and need for the city to apply for a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. If this sounds like deja vu, it is.
All over again.
A motion to recommend authorizing the city administrator to sign a special exception application for the placement of temporary antennae to the, to execute a lease with the Water and Sewer Commission to place the temporary antennae in the next off-season was made and passed unanimously, once again, to facilitate the moving of the cell tower equipment from the water tower to the temporary antennae and the parking lot in the off-season. Ta-da.
Bottom up.
Do we do anything with that?
And that's a motion, I know.
That is a motion.
Motion, all right, second. We've heard this all before, so, not much new here. So, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries.
Wonderful. Discussion of the amendment to the Marina outpost lease. The tenant withdrew his request for that, so we moved right along to the next item, rearranged the agenda to allow Stephen Trainum from Coastal Science Engineering to make two presentations. The first one, we have a contract with Coastal Science Engineering, of which there are multiple tasks involved. Task 8 and 10 will come in actually under budget. Task 11 will require a, an additional $5,000 to, to complete. Task 8 and 10 should be about a $5,000 saving, so there's no motion here, just information so that you know that they're moving forward, and that one item is actually gonna be less than bid, and one's gonna be more, and it's $5,000 to watch. Next, we got into this wonderfully scientific discussion about monitoring bentic in frontal and vertebrae communities.
It's very important stuff.
DNR is insisting that we do a study when we move any sand anywhere in our community for beach re-nourishment projects. We deferred action until such time, though, to finance this. It looks like it is going to be about a $30,000 study. It probably will come back to council once the permits that we're asking for are issued. It had been on our radar a couple of years ago, and we were able to, Coastal Science was able to actually kind of sidestep it, but now the, the DNR is really pushing because of the frequency at which we may be doing, and other communities may be moving sand around in their beaches. So, just a kind of a heads-up at this, this juncture for that.
Mr. Mayor, one comment on that. One interesting point of order with that is the fact that it was $30,000 not paid to an independent.
No, no.
Independent lab to study it. It was $30,000 paid to DNR for them to determine, so.
Correct. Information that appears to have been previously gathered in other areas, but they want to validate the study one more time. So, don't know how, you know, I honestly feel it's very heavy-handed, but we want our permits. It may be what we have to agree to.
Well, I believe in reading, you sent Trainum back, right, to argue the point, try and talk him out of it, but he's not as confident this time as in the past.
We'll see.
We'll see. Okay, please, go ahead.
So, anyway, a motion was made to move forward, and then the vote came, and it was defeated. So, moving on to the next agenda item, old business. We reviewed the FY14 budget, the Marina Fund reviews, income expenses, the Marina Store, Marina Operations, Marina Restaurant, very little change. If the committee is agreeing to, we've agreed to assume the responsibility for replacing the fuel dispensers at the store, which may, which will require the city to produce an amendment to the lease identifying it as such.
Councilmember Stone, since, since we had this dialogue, we've had some further dialogue with the city attorney, and we may be able to go forward with the dispenser replacement without amending the lease. So, that will not be necessary to make a motion to amend the lease.
Okay, well, that will pass on then. Let's see. We have deferred our, where am I? The money savings, and there were certain items were removed. Okay, we did remove certain items from the Marina budget, the canopy for the land fuel dispensers at $40,000, the design for the new Morgan Creek docks for $100,000, in order to leave money in the Marina Fund. in order to leave money in the Marina Fund as, again, kind of a realignment of our priorities moving forward, and not wanting to deplete the fund to zero. These things can be considered later on in future years budgeting. As a result of removing the design of the new Morgan Creek docks, the city will be postponing its application for the boating infrastructure grant, which we considered last month. The, it was mentioned and agreed that the lack of a canopy over the fuel dispensers on land has led to the degradation of the current existing dispensers. But again, we ought to be able to get a year or two without a canopy and revisit that as our budgets will permit. We reviewed the municipal accommodations fee fund revenue, the municipal accommodations fee fund expenditures, ATAX expenditures, public restrooms, front beach, and then that's where we moved. We concluded our meeting at 7:00 PM. The next meeting will be 5:30 Wednesday, May 8th, in the conference room across the hall upstairs.
Very good. Any questions? Jimmy?
Got a question about the schedule at the bottom of the page eight. Last schedule for review was a fund balance schedule Marina Fund, and numbers clearly illustrate why the activity for Marina in the coming year had to be scaled back. Fiscal year 2012 audited ending fund balance $734,536. Physical year 14 projected ending fund balance $34,266. What act, action, if any, was taken by the committee on this? It's in the minutes.
Regarding?
Those fund balances, taking that fund balance from 3/4 of a million dollars down to $34,000. Was there any, I can't tell from the minutes, was there any action taken?
There wasn't action specific to that. The action that was taken was to delay, because of lack of being able to end up with, you know, a negative or a zero fund balance, was to delay any of the pursuit of some of the expenses that had been outlined in the budget. That fund balance situation clearly demonstrates why we couldn't go forward. It's as a result of the dredging last year basically costing twice what we had expected it to.
Okay, so this is, this is null and void. This doesn't mean anything as far as the budgeting that we're going to be doing. Correct? Is that right? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Work began on the tower, for the PS, South Carolina Electric and Gas, after the meeting, so could we, council have an update, and obviously for the public, to know where we are with that project?
I don't have an as-of today update. That was part of the communication that I sent out this afternoon relative to the grocery store circumstance. But I know that they're making progress. Obviously, you can see right here adjacent to City Hall that the antenna's up, and, or the pole is up, I should say.
The riser?
Yes, the riser. And the companion poles and some other infrastructure underground was moved around today. But in terms of a complete, actual completion date, I don't have that information at this time.
Thank you. They're only halfway across the marsh. They'll probably get another month out there, and that's just putting the conduit in, and then they got to poke cable. We got months ahead.
I think it's important that people know that this is going to be a very tall tower, and the people expect it because it's, but it's critical for us to be able to supply backup for any type of storm, so we don't really run into any problems like that, so.
Well, I think the tower is up. I'm not sure it's at its peak height. They're going to move the communications that's on the other tower over near the substation. They use, they're going to, they'll use that on top of this, and they'll take that one down. I don't know if they're sequencing. Jimmy?
Mr. Mayor, since we're talking about those poles, I thought we were talking to them about those extra poles they put in, and now blocking our future parking.
They were moving them today.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Any other questions for Real Property? Very good. You have in your package minutes from the various boards and commissions. Any issues you want to address to them? All right, unheard. Let's move on to a proclamation for Safe Boating Month. Let's make it a year, shall we?
Yeah, that's right.
Feel like reading?
Sure. A proclamation in support of National Safe Boating Week. Whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and the citizens and visitors of the Isle of Palms are fortunate that we have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure boating demands. And whereas, at times, our waterways can become crowded, and boating to the unprepared can be a risky activity. And whereas, not knowing or obeying the navigational rules or the nautical rules of the road, or drinking alcohol, or taking drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear life jackets, are examples of human error or a lack of proper judgment. And whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the US, approximately 70% of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past, and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. So therefore, be it proclaimed on this day, April 23rd, 2013, that the mayor and city council of the city of Isle of Palms, on behalf of the city, do urge all those who vote to wear a life jacket and practice safe boating habits. Dick Cronin, Mayor.
Move to approve proclamation?
Motion.
Second? Not a second? Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're losing focus. Let's move on. I did notice we were saying Safe Boating Week. Our minutes say Safe Boating Month, and I just assumed, make it a year, so. Moving on.
Forever.
All right, proclamation's done. Move on to bills. And first reading by title only of ordinance 2013-04, an ordinance amending Title VII, Licensing Regulations, Chapter 1, Business Licenses, Article A, General Provisions, City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances, to change the due date for business licenses, license fees from January 1st to April 1st, and to change the corresponding delinquent dates from February 1st to May 1st of each year. So I'll make that as a motion, first reading. Motion seconded. Any discussion on first reading? Unheard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No, no. Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, first reading by title only, ordinance 2013-05, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the city of Isle of Palms, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014. I'll make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Please.
I got one discussion. I had asked Marie to get me, and I appreciate all the information on the positions in the city. One thing I really want to evaluate is the pay ranges of those positions. And I've emailed you previously. I need to make sure that we're still within our ranges. So I just want to make sure we have that. And if you know, if you weren't aware of what I'm talking about.
And we evaluate that every year.
Yes, that's fine.
So there are no employees that are outside of their range. There are employees who are not able to get an increase. There are just a handful, maybe two or three, that are not able to get an increase because they're at the top of their range. But we do evaluate it every year.
Okay. Question, Jimmy?
Just to approve the budget as we have gone through the work session last week?
Correct.
With no votes, as three last week. We didn't vote to approve the budget at a work session, right?
Correct, you're correct.
But this is to approve?
This is the first vote.
All right. How it stands at present?
The blue, the blue budget that you have in your possession.
Okay. There's been no changes, obviously, since last week.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two no's, okay. Couple more things working. First reading by title only, ordinance 2013-06, an ordinance amending Title VI, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 2, Animals, Article B. I'm not making this up, folks. Article B, Dogs. City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances to extend the hours that dogs are permitted to run at large on the beach during the period April 1st through September 14th of each year. So I'll make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. This, of course, as Barbara indicated earlier, is changing the hours in which dogs can be off-leash during that period from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. So any other discussion? Jimmy?
Was there any discussion about extending the hours in the evenings in the committee?
I think, I think the overall, I think the overall thought was that there were so many tourists still on the beach at 4:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
With this, we're not only probably the most dog-friendly beach in the area, we're going to become even more friendly, additional hour of off-leash involvement. And I'm hoping that the residents keep the dogs under voice command and keep them under control, because there will be people out there.
Why are you putting this loser chair?
You can't make this stuff up. All right.
Funny thing I've seen this year.
This is great.
I think my face is red.
All in favor of first reading by title only, ordinance 2013-06, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Oh, my. All right, before we go into miscellaneous business, and we have vehicle signs, and another matter to take up, our city attorney would like to address us, and therefore, I'd like to ask that we go into executive session, discuss, take legal advice on potential legal issues. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Seconded?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This should take only a few minutes. Please stay tuned. Okay, thank you all for your patience. We made no decisions, took no actions. An executive session. Did hear from our attorney and our police chief here. Next item on our agenda, as you can see, is our miscellaneous. We have vehicle signs. I'd like to lead the discussion. Obviously, I've heard from Dennis.
No, I just think we need to direct our city attorney to look at our ordinance and see how it can be worded to a way that, you know, that certain signs, advertising signs, folks don't get punished for. The way I look at it, Mayor, is if a service master were to open up in the shopping center, and all their trucks are, you know, labeled, I think we'd have an issue. Because they would have to either garage their trucks, or would have to park them out of sight. So I think we need to address those type of businesses where the entity itself is parking at its own business, and really look at the intent of the law of what we have now. And like I said, that's, I'm not an attorney. That'd have to be up to you and work on that.
I don't think anybody would have an objection to looking at the relevance of our statutes. I mean, I don't think it's been looked at for years. See how it compares with other communities. We don't want to be out of step with other communities that are in a similar boat that we are. Have businesses, and are dependent on businesses to be successful in our communities. But the sign ordinance up until recently has served us well, so I would like to see how others have dealt with it, if they've had similar problems to ours.
You always have to be careful, because changing something, you can have unintended consequences. I know there are areas that in college kids do it, where they take their car and have it wrapped, and it becomes a virtual moving sign. I mean, you wouldn't want to have, you know, 20 or 30 jiffy lubes and whatever parked in your lot, or in my neighbor's driveway all night. So it definitely has to be looked at, but I think we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. It's worked. We haven't had any real sign pollution, and I don't think any of us want it.
Okay, any other?
I would like to bring up one other along these similar lines that, if I work for a company, and there are quite a few residents in this community that have had vehicles with signage on them for many years, and as a result of applying for a home office, they then have to remove that signage from their vehicle. I'm not sure that that's correct. That's bothered me when I've seen that in the Bozemanets in months past. Case in point, young man on Hartnett Boulevard worked for a construction company for 20-some years, parked that vehicle in his yard for 20-some years because he applied for a home business license to keep the books for his boss.
Had to take the sign off?
He had to take the sign off.
Okay.
I don't believe that's correct.
Well, let's, let's take a look. It's appropriate to, it's appropriate to constantly be renewing our, all of our ordinances, but typically, we only look at them when someone's, the head, something sticks up, and then we got to deal with it. So this is not inappropriate to do.
We need a motion, or are we just?
No, I just ask our attorney. She'll, she'll help us out, and she'll bring it back to us.
Report back with some examples, and then you all can take it from there.
Exactly.
And the change would go through the Planning Commission as well, right? The sign ordinance is?
It would have to go through Planning, through their opinion, and they'll come back to us. Any other? I didn't look over here. Anything over here? All right, we're keeping you busy, aren't we?
We like to do that.
No other items on our agenda. Next meeting, May 28th, 7:00 PM.
Just mention one thing. It's nothing controversial. Just remember that May 15th through October 15th, the Lights Out Ordinance for Sea Turtles goes into effect. No lights visible from the beach. They're coming on May 15th before you know it.
All right.
Turtles are out there. We have a new one at the Turtle Hospital, so they're in the waters.
All right. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any opposed? We're out of here.
No, I think Wendy, no, Wendy, it was, there was a sick turtle that was probably way out, and he's got to...